Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this budget workshop of the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors. We'll start the meeting as we start every meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, so please stand and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Corporal, would you please call roll?
Mr. Kezak?
Here.
Ms. Hannah?
Here.
Ms. Kane?
Here.
Also in attendance tonight is Township Manager Eden Ratliff, Township, I'm sorry, Assistant Township Manager Nick Valla, and various department heads.
Thank you, Ms. Corporal. Our first agenda item is public comment. This is public comment on non-agenda items. Is there anyone here for public comment? All right, seeing none, we will move right into our third agenda item, which is another review of the 2026 budget process. Mr. Ratliff?
Thank you very much, Mr. Kezak, and to the board, and welcome to the second capital budget planning meeting, Budget Workshop of the Board of Supervisors. Much of this information is going to be a review if you attended or if you viewed our meeting from, I believe it was August when we met, and we talked about capital. This is a series of workshops that we've been having led by our dedicated budget team who is listed here, as well as the Board of Supervisors. Last week, we talked about operations. The week before that, we talked about revenue. We did capital in August. So this is the last planned public meeting regarding the budget until we present a proposed budget. So all of these things are here for discussion purposes. They're an opportunity for the board to provide feedback for the community to ask questions and provide their perspective as to what the 2026 budget may look like as the board goes through that development process to state their priorities for the next fiscal year. So again, this is a review, lots of information to discuss, and we look forward to the board's feedback. Feel free to interrupt us at any time. So the format tonight, we're going to talk about the current budget just briefly, understanding capital, going through capital projects. We'll talk about sources of funding, which will also be a review, as well as what all of that kind of rolls up to in terms of a projection for 2026 to inform sort of the feedback process with the board, and then there'll be an opportunity for the public to provide us some input as well. So a number that those of you who have been with us through this process may be sick of seeing is the current 2025 budgeted deficit. The reason that we're showing this number is to just put in perspective what the current financial situation looks like. This number is able to be funded by our fund balance, which is a good thing for us, a sign of our financial health, but is something to consider as we kind of look at opportunities to develop the 2026 budget. I also want you to keep these big numbers in mind because at the end of this, we start doing if this, then that type of analyses where we start adding and subtracting different numbers to themselves to see sort of what it rolls up into, into the 26 budget through the decision-making process. You don't have to memorize it, you can ask questions, and we can sort of dive right in. The anticipated 2026 deficit at the existing level of service, so we talked a lot about this last week for those of you that were here, if the Board of Supervisor says, keep the existing level of service exactly what it is going into 2026, what would that new operating deficit be? It would be 3.7 million. That's because our operational costs go up by about a million dollars every year. So that's what that looks like. And again, these numbers are important because we are going to roll it into capital to see what that larger picture looks like. Average real estate tax in the township is about $560. We know the real estate tax is much more when you consider the other taxing jurisdictions. We got feedback from one of our residents this week, which we really appreciate. We love community feedback, especially about the budget process. They said, hey, you're showing the real estate tax, but you're not showing the earned income tax. We read that email, we said you're exactly right. So we did some math to try to figure out what the average earned income tax is in Middletown Township. It's about $600. The challenge here, super hard to estimate, right? Not everyone pays EIT. Obviously, there's income disparity throughout the township. So 600 is based on the 18,000 persons in the township that pay an EIT and that also live here. It doesn't factor into the little bit that we get from non-resident EIT. It also doesn't consider those of our residents who may work in another community and pay additional EIT to them, which is several million dollars that our residents are paying to other taxing jurisdictions. So it's a challenging number to nail down. It assumes that everyone's making about $100,000 in the township, but that is what the average looks like. So that totals to be about $1,160. Any questions so far from the board? Okay, so again, a review, understanding capital assets. So when we talk about capital, we talk about it in two different ways. One is capital improvements, which is new stuff, sort of doing new things. If we're going to build a new park or we're going to add a facility, that would be an improvement, something that doesn't currently exist. The definition we work with internally is adding a new asset or upgrading existing ones to increase functionality or adapt them for new uses. So if we were to build a new building, if we were to add, you know, a signalized intersection, upgrade it from maybe yield signs or stop signs to traffic signals, that's all capital improvements. Capital maintenance is maintaining the things that we have now. Nothing lasts forever. Things experience wear and tear. They have useful lives. These things need to be replaced. So when we talk about maintenance, it gets really tricky because sometimes we're talking about millions of dollars, right? If we're maintaining buildings, if we're maintaining roads, if we're doing concrete projects, if we're replacing vehicles, you know, these things can be super expensive and have a significant impact on a municipal operating budget. When you get into smaller communities, a little bit different than Middletown, sometimes the maintenance of assets that they acquire either through grant funding or different programs or sometimes donations has a much larger impact on the budget than what they sometimes realize. And I think that you'll see some of that tonight. A lot of our capital budget is really not proposing to add really great things and exciting things to the township, but it's really maintaining the existing assets that we have. This is an area of the budget that I think people really dive into quickly. If you commute throughout the township and you hit the same pothole every day, it's the capital budget that deals with that. Okay, so we have a mentee question. For those of you who are staples in our budget process, you're very familiar with mentee. Mr. Valla, do you want to guide us through this first mentee question?
Yes, absolutely. So for anybody in the audience and anybody who might be watching this live from home, if you go to the very top of the display there, you'll see mentee.com, M-E-N-T-I dot com, and you'll be prompted to put in that eight-digit code, which is five, four, six, nine, six, two, nine, three. And again, that is five, four, six, nine, six, two, nine, three. This is a tool for us to interact with you all in real time to get a sense of how the room or anybody participating in this meeting feels about some of the stuff that we're talking about. So this is the first of a handful of questions we have for tonight, just simply to kind of put a finger on the pulse. This is not determinate or decision-making in any way. This is simply just to get a sense of how folks feel. So the first question we have here is, are you satisfied with the current level of capital maintenance? So capital maintenance, as Mr. Ratliff described, is the existing maintenance of the stuff that we already have, the existing roads, the existing facilities, and different categories we have here up on the screen. So this is simply on a scale of one to 10, how do you feel like we are currently doing taking care of our capital infrastructure? And this is the only question we have. At this point in the presentation, there will be two other points tonight where we will prompt you, so keep those phones handy. So just to recap for anybody who may not be seeing in the room, it looks like from the very top, stormwater maintenance, is it about a 4.6 out of 10, road repaving, 5.2 out of 10, park and, uh, park and public facilities, among the higher scores of 7.5, as is police vehicles, and right down the middle at 5.8 is ADA curb ramp installations. It's still moving.
Right down the middle on ADA curb ramp installation feels about right. I feel like we get a lot of feedback about ADA ramps. When we go into a community and we start to do a new project and we're replacing those ramps, a lot of happiness in other parts where maybe they've been deteriorated, not so much. Okay, so the proposed 2026 projects, before we go any further, I do want to note, as Ms. Corporal did as well, our department leader, department leadership team here, our department heads are here. This is all their work. These are sort of their creativity, their understanding of what the needs are within their department. They went through a robust presentation process to the department team to sort of explain, you know, why these things are being proposed in '26, sometimes multiple years of planning, and sort of defended that. So they've gone through multiple defenses of these requests, which is how it got to this point in the process. There are some things, not many, that we saw in August that did not make it into the October meeting just because of the numbers that we're seeing. You know, we felt that that could be pushed another year. But to the board, if there are additional questions or you want to dive deep on any of these things, the department heads are ready and enthusiastic to be at the podium and answer questions. Right, guys? Yeah, that was a lot of enthusiasm. Okay. So first up, Parks and Rec, Mr. Valla.
Yes, thank you very much. So you'll see here, we are showing all improvements across each category tonight, showing the separation of improvements to maintenance, just to really drive the point home of separating what we have already have in the township and what we're trying to take care of versus new and additional things. You'll see in the park and rec category, there's nothing new or additional improved. That doesn't mean we're not doing anything, but we're simply maintaining or taking care of existing facilities. So at Simmons Park, which is already a tennis part, tennis court facility, we're looking at resurfacing and fencing that. Jones Park, a playground replacement, security enhancements at several parks, safety netting at Twin Oaks Park, and some facility repairs at a few different locations. And I believe the next-
Next slide is going to be pictures to sort of tell that story.
And these are all real pictures. This is not AI-generated. This is Middletown Township.
I hate that that's a qualifier nowadays.
I know.
Yeah. Any questions from the board on the recommendation from Parks and Rec? You have the slides in front of you, so you can see the financial impact of these projects. Anything jump out to you in terms of things you definitely want to see in the proposed budget or things you'd rather see pushed to a future year? I know it's hard to make those recommendations of the, in the process. We can always come back once we're through the presentation, but.
I think getting a little additional detail as to like what is behind these costs. Like, to me, $350,000 to re-surface tennis courts is, seems extremely high, right? But there's probably numbers that go behind that. So understanding what that entails is, will be important to make it, being able to make that decision.
Sure. Mr. Capera?
Great question. So the $350,000 is basically the courts were built 15 years ago and they've settled. So what we have to do is mill it, mill it out, gut it, and then repave it, and then resurface it with all-new netting, and then the fencing has to go around it as well. So basically, the whole thing, soup to nuts, is $350,000. We had just gone some, through something similar at Forsythia Crossing Park with the hockey rink. It's about the same process.
Any color that you can add on to how you reach $350,000?
Sure. Basically, we had two different quotes come out, two different vendors that do this for a living, plus we had the actual life of Forsythia Crossing Park. So when they mill roads or anything else like that, they have to take down everything and fence, and mill it, and, like I said, put down asphalt grade, so it's not a road grade, it's a tighter grade of asphalt that goes in, similar to what we have at the pickleball courts. So, and then the pay, the epoxy paving is about $70,000 on its own, just to, just to put down the coating on that as well.
I think that will be, is there any of this can be internalized? Like, can our own Public Works team do any of this?
Yeah, so we've asked that question for nearly every project on here. It's not an easy answer. It's certainly not an easy answer in what I would say year one of major construction. Maybe I shouldn't say year one, but at this point for major construction with the Department of Public Works, the Department of Public Works does a tremendous job at what they've been asked to do, which is a lot of maintenance, right? 870 acres of different small patches of grass throughout the township that they're responsible for, plowing roads. They're the full-time mechanics for our entire fleet, which is over 100 vehicles. You know, there's a lot that they're asked to do. It's not necessarily oriented towards construction. Now is there opportunity for that to change? Absolutely. But it's additional resources is, you know, additional folks into that department who hasn't grown substantially in many years, you know, where that becomes a challenge. Is this a time to inject those resources? Maybe it is. You know, I don't have the answer to that specifically, but if the board does wind up on this project in '26 and we choose to outsource or job out that, that project, we're looking at about $350,000. Another, if I could just add, another thing to think about is economies of scale, right? Like, you don't want to be adding a paving crew into your Public Works Department unless you're going to be doing a substantial amount of paving. So that, that becomes, you know, part of it, too.
I think the other thing that's important is, so in this instance, we've got a tennis court that is borderline unusable at this point, right? So it's a, it's a community asset that residents are not being given the opportunity to utilize. And so, and obviously we can see the picture of the nets. And so in all these examples, you're talking about circumstances where these are, these are community assets. These are things that the township residents should have available to them to recreate, and you need to do maintenance periodically in order to keep them usable. So to have a, have a tennis court that you can't play tennis on, obviously, you know, maintenance is going to be required from time to time. So some of these things I view as necessities.
And just to add, so one of the things that I do remember is, so the park was built 15 years ago. We have settling, so we have subsurface issues, too. So it's not just milling and putting in new stuff. We have to go underneath and add some, add some subsurface to get everything level before we put in the asphalt. So that's why it was a little higher than normal.
And then how do we prevent that from not happening again?
You pat it down. So we had an issue with it at Firefighters Park. So when it was tennis courts, we actually had, think about it this way, we put six inches of asphalt, put it down. 10 years later, we put six inches of asphalt, and then we had the same cracks, and then we had another six inches. So we had 18 inches of asphalt. That was all bad because the subsurface was never taken care of. So then we had to take out 18 inches and then take care of the subsurface.
We see the same thing with roads all the time, right? I mean, there's a difference between doing a mill and overlay, which is sometimes super appropriate if the base of that road is well-done or, you know, is sort of outliving its useful life. But when you have roads with the bases in bad repair and you don't repair that base, which makes a road project much more expensive, if you do a mill and overlay, very quickly you're going to see all that spider web cracking and everything else come up.
What's the typical lifespan for a court? Like, and how often will we have to replace them? Is there like a, I don't know, a timeline for each one of them?
I mean, the asphalt, the asphalt should last 25, 30 years. It's not like a road has a useful life of 25 years. It takes a beating. Tennis courts really
Don't.
Don't take a beating. All you have to do is like every 10 years have to resurface it. In theory, is if the subsurface and everything is good, the asphalt is good, then all you have to do is, is repaint it every 10 years.
So we're making an investment fixing the foundation?
Correct.
So I know that our township is fantastic at looking at grants. Is this something that would be a possibility for a grant?
So, yes. Patrick, Patrick and I have talked to the United States Tennis Association. While they say they have millions of dollars to give, they only give you like 10 or $20,000 per court. So it was something not great. But then, to Mr. Ratliff's point, the local share, the part, the casino money's been very generous the last couple of years.
There is a series of slides at the end of the presentation that talks about everything we've applied for grants for, how grants factor into all of this. Yeah, so we'll be going over that tonight also. Any other questions on Parks and Rec? Feedback from the board? Thank you, Mr. Capera. Building and grounds, capital improvement, lobby security, propose, I should probably flip through here. Lobby security, this is a project that's been in and out of the capital fund or in and out of being proposed for years. It's an opportunity to sort of solidify and provide security to the downstairs. So if you enter this meeting room off to the right, about half of the team that is non-uniform that works in this building are all kind of available and open to the public. And what I mean by that is members of the public can come in and sit right down across from you in your office, whether you knew they were coming or invited them, and sometimes they do so with video cameras and everything else. Those things happened, have happened here, so we're looking for an opportunity in-house with our Public Works crew, Ms. Kane, to provide some security and reinforcement for the team that works downstairs. Notably, the upstairs is all secure. You have to badge through, you know, glass doors and all of that kind of stuff. So it's sort of a continuation of that theme within the building. From, from, and that's $50,000. From a maintenance perspective, we're looking for repairs to this building. I think in August, we had significant discussions about the status of the roof on this building, which has not been significantly repaired or replaced since the construction of the building about 20 years ago, 23 years ago. Every year that this project sort of gets deferred, it becomes more and more expensive because, of course, cost of projects go up over time, but at the, you know, the deterioration is also, you know, kind of speeding up. So we're looking at $1.1 million. I think that was the meeting where we had the tile that has mold and water damage all over it that we showed to everybody. So it was super challenging. We're looking, and this is something I think that we can really look hard at whether or not it makes sense for the '26 budget, but concrete replacement out front, you know, as everyone enters that building, that concrete is not ADA compliant. It's, you know, significantly challenged there. There may be an opportunity to make some improvements there. As well as the exterior stucco, it's what we call the North Station, which is a substation of the Langhorne Middletown Fire Company. That stucco is in significant disrepair, the exterior of that building. That also needs to be, to be repaired, and so the estimate we have for that is $128,000. $1.5 million in capital maintenance on building and grounds is sort of a sticker shock number. It's mainly focused on the roof of this building, of the municipal center. Year over year, I would hope to see that number be significantly less.
And I should add, too, at the North Station, there is a small repair for the roof on that building as well, and there is an RDA grant submitted for that project.
Yeah, regarding the roof, and I hate this one because it, it is something that we have deferred, and, but clearly, it's reaching a critical point where something needs to be done. I mean, it's visible to anybody that is in this building with any frequency. I guess, just a general question, how long would we expect to have a new roof? Assuming we did this all-in project, how long would that last? What's the, what's the life?
The lifespan of a commercial roof?
Yeah, so importantly, this is not a full replacement of the roof. We have a, a nice metal roof on this building, and we've had a few different experts out to assess it. And the good news is, is not in such disrepair that the entire roof needs to be replaced, but merely it's a pretty significant patch job. And so noting that, I would estimate probably 25 to 30 years because you're extending the life to the typical lifespan of a metal roof, which is typically in the 50-year time span.
So I just want to clarify, you had said that each year we wait, it's, obviously, it's getting worse. Does that mean that not only you're going to pay more because of the cost of labor and, you know, the, the equipment's going up and everything, but because it's getting more damage, we're, it's just going to be exponentially worse every time, every year?
Every single rainstorm, this building indoors, this building is taking on more and more damage, yes.
It's really kind of awkward, being in like staff meetings or leadership meetings in this building, and when a torrential rain does come through, people like to stop what they're doing. They leave their workstation, they take buckets, they're trying to like figure out where the water's coming in. It's certainly not the job that we ask them to do, and my preference would be that they do the job that we ask them to do and not take care of that. Obviously, we're doing the things that we need to do in this building, you know, but it, it's a project that at some point needs to get funded.
And if I'm, if you wouldn't mind advancing the next slide, just to really kind of drive the point home, and this is a precursor to something else we're going to talk about. That photo on the left is a real snapshot of the very front of this building. So when we get, I would say, a moderate rainstorm, that is what the front of this building looks like. It is a literal waterfall. The silver pillar that you're seeing there has an internal gutter system that is clearly inadequate for the size of this building. That is something that we're also looking to address as part of the actual patch job that we're looking to do, too. But this goes to show you, only 25 years ago, this is, this building was built with, at the time, adequate stormwater management facilities. And just in 25 years' time, with how things have evolved, this building is no longer really fit to manage a modern storm.
When you're facing budget challenges, it's hard to approve $1.1 million for roof repairs. You know, I can certainly appreciate that, but, you know, at some point, it has to be repaired.
Yeah, I mean, I, I've seen this waterfall many a times, so I can verify that there's a very recent photograph. The other thing I think that is important to remember, you know, things, things like parks and playgrounds and, and roads, it's easy for residents to understand the need because they utilize them every day. Not every resident utilizes this building every day, but we have a lot of people that come to work here every day. And so I do think it's important to keep this building safe for the employees. How many people work here on a regular basis?
In this building?
Yeah.
About 100, at least.
About 100? Yeah, so 100 people come to work here every day, you know, and they've got that waterfall to encounter every time it rains and leaking roof and mold and all kinds of other things. So it's, I mean, it's, it's important.
And to that end, as the new person who working in this building, there's a lot more foot traffic here than I would have expected in a township building. You know, this not being my first township building, there's a lot of people that come in for permits, for various approvals, for certificate of occupancy reports, you know, people who need to interact with the police department. And then, of course, we have community members who use the public meeting spaces, right? This is not just our meeting room. You know, it's certainly primarily the room of where government, you know, and governance happens, but we've got community members and community groups that use it, steering committees, boards. So it's a popular place to be. We sort of joked that Wednesday night, this is like the community center. There's always meetings happening here, you know, whether they're directly related to the government or not. So if you're looking for things to do, come to the township building on a Wednesday night. Any other questions on building and grounds? Next is going to be information technology. Mr. Valla, I think it's your turn.
Sure, thank you. So on the left in the improvements category is some broadcast system upgrades. So for those who are familiar, we broadcast all of our Board of Supervisors meetings. One thing we didn't highlight at last week's operating budget, but is certainly relevant for this conversation, is the staff is recommending that Planning Commission meetings be televised using the broadcast system beginning in 2026. And importantly, doing some ongoing maintenance to the system will allow us to continue to expand and do additional broadcasting meetings in the future, as we know that is something that has been talked about a lot more recently. And over on the maintenance side, again, most of our staff in some way, shape, or form touch technology. There's some folks who are entirely, their entire job depends on a computer. We do have 100% of our employees working in person the vast majority of their time and, but because computers are core to their function, making sure that they have modern technology consistent with our computer replacement plan is, of course, essential. And then the other items you'll see there, the network course switch is an incremental step towards moving towards a cloud-based system is something that we've been working towards over the last several years and continuing to do so. And then finally, the last two items are both mobile computers for the first responder vehicles in the township.
There are quite a few residents that we're interacting with that are watching our meetings remotely. We know this because they communicate with us, they email, they call, they reach out to the Board of Supervisors, they post about it on Facebook. And I remember being new here, you know, saying to Mr. Valla, I don't, I didn't see them at the meeting. He said, Eden, come on, man, like, they're watching online. I said, oh, that's right, they're watching online. And with as much conversation that there is in this community about, you know, the growth pressure, development pressures, you know, the role of the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission in the land development process, if they're not coming to the meeting and, and watching government participate, which most people do not do, broadcasting the Planning Commission meetings is an opportunity for folks to really dial in on something that they care deeply about. So I'm excited about the prospect of doing that next year. that they care deeply about. So I'm excited about the prospect of doing that next year.
Questions on IT? Okay, so we are on to the police department. So once again, similar to Parks and Rec, no proposals for capital improvements. This is just maintaining the existing infrastructure we have. Body and ink car dash cameras at $110,000, weapons and gear replacement, $30,000 for firearms, tasers at $15,000, and then some facility repairs for $25,000. On the next picture, for those of you who don't know, we have a shooting range here. Our police officers, we want them to be proficient with the tools that we give them, and we want them to be using them more than the once-a-year required qualifying process. So this is an indoor shooting range that's actually in this building that hasn't been upgraded in a long time. It's something that needs to be maintained, it's something that needs to be upgraded, and we're proposing to do that for $25,000 next year.
I'll just comment. I know we often talk about how great the police department is in getting the most possible useful life out of their vehicles as they can.
Yeah, they're super good at it.
And I will just say, I know they do the same with their firearms. They get as much useful life out of their firearms as they can. So when they need to be replaced, they need to be replaced. That's a safety issue for our officers.
Yeah, when the chief started telling me how much useful life they get out of their police vehicles, I was sort of shocked. I mean, we're talking in excess of 100,000 miles. I mean, they're really putting wear and tear on these things and working with our very skilled mechanics in Public Works to run them for a very long time, which is a great benefit to the township because replacing vehicles is not inexpensive.
And importantly, because it's not on this slide, we are going to be talking about vehicles momentarily as a standalone category.
Okay, so for those of you who are wondering what the theme of the budget is, I'm still sort of figuring out exactly what that theme's going to be, but I think Public Works is going to be a significant part of it. So I will take improvements. Mr. Valla, if you want to take maintenance.
Absolutely.
So Public Works site improvement, this has been going on for a long time, I think in terms of conversations. So a picture is worth 1,000 words. That building on the top left, you heard our Public Works director speak about it in August, not really adequate for the size of the department now and the operations of the department. I actually went in there with him after the last capital meeting, and you could see on, you know, on the rails that maintain the garage doors that go up and down, they're all bent and sort of messed up because, you know, they run into them. Because the trucks are a lot bigger than what those bays are, which you can't quite see there. We chose not to tell the story in public about how we heated that garage last year, which is a place that we have folks with offices as well as our sign shop. We have more signs in this township than people might realize, and we maintain most of them. You know, it's not a safe building, it's not adequate. We've applied for grant funding for it. The construction cost to build a new facility, which we would need on that site, is $4 million, you know, but there's some work that needs to happen there preliminarily to kind of design what the future looks like. We have a street sweeper, and for those, maybe I should have pointed it out, we have vehicles and apparatus in this room here to the right of Mr. Valla. These are from one of the children of our team member. They allowed us to borrow these vehicles tonight, which we really appreciate. I'll just note, the excavator is not proportional to the dump truck that's there. Our excavators are much bigger than the dump trucks. They excavate and dump dirt and debris into the back of dump trucks. But we need to replace a street sweeper, a very popular piece of equipment we have that runs five days a week. Street sweepers are not inexpensive, $335,000. Replacing the excavator at $135,000, both of which we've applied for RDA funding for. Mr. Valla did a nice job with his presentation Friday morning to the RDA, talking about the importance of these, you know, of these pieces of equipment. So just on the improvement side of trying to deal with these things is $870,000. So now for the larger number on the right.
Yes. On the maintenance category, you'll see, and I'm just going to jump ahead to road repaving right in the middle for two reasons. Number one, it is 80% of the big number you're seeing at the bottom there, $2 million. And more importantly, it is a different number than we talked about in August. So as we've been talking about the budget process and had some public interactions and even with the board, we've heard one thing pretty consistently the entire time is we want you to do more, specifically things that people can see, touch, and really wrap their minds around, and things that really impact their day-to-day life. Roads-
Who interacted with the township road coming to this meeting tonight, right? That's every hand in the meeting room. I mean, that's the example there.
Yeah, thank you very much. And so we've heard more about more roads, more curb ramps, more stormwater maintenance. And so what you're seeing there is an investment of $2 million. And I will caveat, and we'll detail this a little bit further in tonight's presentation, we are planning for that money to be coming from the highway aid fund, which is a dedicated fund that we receive from the gas tax. And so, like I said, I'll talk about that a little bit more, but that is the big number you're seeing there. Just to continue at that point down, then I'll circle back up to heavy equipment.
One last thing on roads. So the current road maintenance program is a 100-year replacement program. Roads are not built to last 100 years anymore. Maybe at one point in American history, but not now. You know, we're doing about 1.3 paved roads per year. We need to be looking at like 6.5 miles, 1.3 or 6.5. So there's a real need for investment there. We have a great repaving timeline chart over my right shoulder for anyone who hasn't seen it yet. So, you know, this is an investment into that infrastructure. What concerns me greatly about roads and concrete, ADA ramps, stormwater, is if you don't maintain it and you don't sort of get ahead of the maintenance opportunities of these, by the time you realize how far behind you are because things are really deteriorating, the cost to get caught back up is exorbitant. And the community winds up saying, "You need to do all of this now. When are you going to repave my road?" And you really can't dig your way out of that hole. So, you know, this is a difficult decision to make, but it's a real opportunity to make sure that we don't get into that position in the future.
Exactly. And that number is actually four times more in paving than we did this year, actually close to five times. And importantly, that is about 9.1 miles of roads. And we are planning to focus next year's road paving in Levittown. We recognize that Levittown in many, over many years, has been underinvested in infrastructure, and so we see that as a real opportunity to make a meaningful impact for people. We also have on this list some line painting, as well as patching a footbridge near Walter Miller Elementary. Moving back to the top of the list, we have heavy equipment. I will call out the first two dump trucks, as well as the last open trailer, all three of those. In addition to two of the improvement category items, are all submitted for RDA grants, and so we're hoping to hear about those by early December. And finally, some brine equipment for a large truck, as well as a crack sealing machine. And I believe on the next slide where we had the photos, you'll see on the bottom left there is the current crack sealing machine, which I'm going to venture to say, I mean, a lot of things are older than me, but I would say that's close to older than my parents even. And I won't say how old my parents are because my mom would be upset with me. But all that to say, it is really not a safe-conditioned piece of equipment for our staff to be using. It has actually been the source of an employee injury before, and so we're looking to modernize it.
Yeah, tar bubble comes up, pops, it's very hot, you know, and it can burn employees. When the Public Works director showed this to me, I said, "You have, like, this can't be real. I hope we're not using this thing." And because the technology, it's not really evidenced here, is so old, it takes hours to heat up, right, which is totally inefficient in terms of going out and doing some simple crack sealing. If you look at the sort of stains around the box on that, that's hot tar. So that has spilled over.
Any questions on Public Works? Any thoughts on $2 million in road paving a year?
Just that it's a substantial increase over the number of miles that we're currently paving on an annual basis. So it's not a comment on whether or not the need is there. It certainly is. And the message is definitely received, that at the current rate, it'll be 100 years before we repave every road in the township, and that's not sustainable for the long term. So it's something we definitely have to look at, but it's a big cost investment, and again, a lot more money than we have been dedicating to road repaving sort of in the last few years.
And my only other comment was for the new garage building. I know this portion would be just for the design, but I think knowing how we are going to fund that full construction before we go forward with the design will be important.
Yeah, we're working with our state rep, state senator, and United States congressman to try to identify grant funding for that project, and we feel cautiously optimistic at the opportunities that are in front of us. The good thing is to go through the design process doesn't necessarily bind us to construction. You don't want to design something that you don't have the intention to construct, but that design doesn't necessarily go bad if it sits on the shelf before we ultimately construct it. But your point is certainly well taken.
And I think just to add, just to make sure, you know, for the public's purposes and the sake of transparency, to put all the chips on the table, a project of that magnitude, it is normal to do a borrowing or bond issuance. There are not any bond issuances recommended for this coming year. However, a project of that magnitude, historically this township has, and we as professionals would also recommend, that if there is a lack of external funding or a capacity to handle a large one-time expense like that, that is the normal kind of thing you would be able to borrow for.
Yeah, our budget is not such where we could have a $4 million dispersment for a project like this.
How many years would that be over approximately?
Yeah, it really depends on the cost to borrow, the timeframe we're looking at, what the economy and market are doing at the time. There are external experts that we would work with and have worked with in the past that would advise us on this. That's outside of my area of expertise at this point. And again, we're not looking at a bond issuance in the next multiple-year, you know, conversation. We're really aggressively chasing after grant funding at the state and federal level to try to fund it.
Yeah, and I don't want to wreck the surprise for you guys, because I know you've done a good job at setting it up, but it is traditionally, you give us all the bad news first with how much all of this will cost, and then at the end, you tell us how much grant funding we've got or are applying for. So for those that are paying attention, that part's coming, but we keep talking about it.
It is coming. Yeah, your answer coming. Yep, have no fear. We'll hurry it up so we can get to the good news. Okay, vehicle replacements.
Yes, so over on the left hand, so the only thing that we're looking to do additional, and this is really a modification of an existing vehicle. There is already a fire chief vehicle, but we're looking to replace that with a fire command vehicle, which has a slightly different useful function to it. Mr. Ratliff can certainly embellish on that.
Yeah, there's a big difference. The chief's vehicle right now is a pickup truck, and everything is sort of sitting in the back of the truck. When you think of a command vehicle, I want you to think about it like a mobile office. So if they go to an emergency scene, they have a lot to do. They have, you know, whiteboards and different pieces of equipment, radios, multiple radios, depending on what's happening on the scene. You know, they're showing up and can run command out of that. All four of our volunteer companies have multiple of these. As we're building out the career side of the daytime engine, it's sort of just leaning into that process.
And again, on the capital maintenance side, the pickup truck is something we did submit for an RDA grant on, and there are also two zero-turn mowers, as Mr. Ratliff said. We mow over 800 acres of grass on a regular basis every season. In the police department, this is, I believe, a total of four or five vehicles. There is also an RDA grant submitted for that to staff them or replace their vehicles for the year. And then in building and zoning, there is a small amount of grant funding specifically for an electric vehicle. There is one, a vehicle due for replacement anyway. There is one EV deployed in that department already, which has been useful. And I'm also pleased to share that we are in the process of hiring a new building inspector to fill a longstanding vacancy, to make sure that our folks who are doing some construction work in their homes and businesses are able to get inspections in a prompt way.
Pictures of the vehicles. Transportation, so on the capital improvement side.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So a lot of these things are items that we have existing grant funding for. We've talked about them. Some of them are already underway, such as the South Flowers Mill warning system. So this is some funding we received earlier this year. Thank you to our state rep and senator to add an advanced warning system or try to prevent vehicle strikes on the South Flowers Mill Road Bridge. This is the one near the Harley-Davidson dealership, near Business Route 1. Working up the list, you'll see there New Falls Road and Woodburn Roads. This is two corridors of improvements to do pedestrian push buttons. This project is currently in the design phase, but we do expect it to be bitted and implemented in 2026. And then I'll save the curb ramps for last, so jumping back up to the top, the school zone improvements. This is something that we are in the process of identifying a project consultant for that is a grant requirement and looking to do the improvements to the school zone signals there, and that will include a speed indicator. So this is kind of one of the ones where we, you know, is it improvement, is it maintenance? We do already have school zone signals throughout the township, but because these are new, we're looking to do them all at once, and they're actually a little bit more modernized with that speed indicator on them. We really thought about, this is an improvement. But you'll see there, we have 60% grant funding for that. The last thing that I'm going to talk about is the ADA curb ramps. Again, as we talked about with roads, we hear over and over again, why are we taking so long to do all of these ramps? I think we said at the August meeting that I would be early 60s by the time we catch up. And when I say catch up, that means we finish all the ones that today are out of date on. And I won't say how old I am right now, but that's a long time from now.
560 ADA ramps are out of compliance. And when I say out of compliance, for those who are ADA experts, sometimes they update the spec for a ramp, right? So from 2023 to 2025, the ADA laws and regulations around what a ramp is supposed to be design-wise may change minimally. That's not what we're talking about. We're not talking about minimal changes where the average person may look at a ramp and say, "Yeah, that's likely ADA compliant." We're talking about significantly disrepaired ramps that are not able to be used by people who are differently abled in our township, 560 of them. We have well over 560 ramps. It will currently take us till 2053 to address all of those at our current ADA ramp investment schedule, which concerns me greatly because all the rest of the ramps will be well out of compliance by then. Many communities, what they do when they do a significant kind of road project, they go in the year before and do all the curbing and all the ramps. What we are faced with is also the opportunity, I should say, to kind of go back and comply with ramps that maybe aren't due to be paved for another 10, 15 years, that maybe weren't done in the past, as well as trying to keep up with the, you know, with the demand for maintenance and maintaining these ramps. So significant increases of $750,000. We have a chart in the back of the room that talks about this in a little bit more detail. Trying to get to compliance with those ramps that are out of compliance and also see what the future looks like of maintenance.
And importantly, similar to road paving, when you do curb ramps like this in a larger quantity, there's an economiescale there, right? You're able to do more with a little bit lower overhead because you're already spending the overhead to go out there and have the crews out there and do all of the administrative work. It's the same whether it's a small construction or brick construction. And so we recognize that there is some cost savings when you do a higher volume like that. And as Mr. Ratliff said, it is very important that we get these ramps done ahead of paving. It helps, makes the overall projects a lot more efficient and less impactful to the residents, even though we are doing it in two separate pieces. But importantly, that budget would allow us to finish the cobalt ridge section, where up until this year, we've been slowly chipping away at about 20 or 30 ramps at a time. That budget would allow us in one shot to completely finish that neighborhood, which has been seeing curb ramps incrementally replaced for many years.
For those of you who can't tell by the passion in Mr. Valla's voice, while being the assistant township manager, he's also many respects a transportation planner, which is why he knows these things inside and out. Any questions on transportation? Stormwater.
Sure. So the first one, even though we have it in the improvements category, importantly, the Langren Gables especially is a project that is already underway, and so those funds have already been encumbered and in some respects already spent. And Reed's Avenue is a project that is not quite as far along, but is currently in the bid phase. That $1,094,000 figure is what we expect across those two projects to be expended in 2026. So you're going to be seeing in your upcoming board meetings payment certificates for the Langren Gables projects for work that's already been completed. And so that is our estimate of what, from a cash standpoint, is going to be impacting the 2026 project. But importantly, those are funds that have already been encumbered. We are noting that the $744,000 grant specifically for the Langren Gables project is funds that we expect to be hitting next year. So fortunately, what we have already spent is going to be coming just from the capital fund, but most of what is going to be spent next year will be covered by those grant funds. Hillside Avenue is another stormwater project. This is something that our staff has the ability to perform in-house, and so this is a bitted-out construction figure. We do expect that this will come down if we do have the ability to perform it in-house. And then we'll be talking about that a little bit more detail later on as well. And then finally, these last two are some design figures, because, and again, in the sake of transparency, some projects that we've been looking to do over a multi-year process, we recognize that there is a cost incurred that typically is absorbed into the engineering budget that we felt like would be better called out to show you the true cost of designing a project, which is, on average, is about 10% of the construction cost. And there is grant applications out for the construction of both of those, I might add.
Continuation?
Yes. So everything on the left you'll see is an MS-4, which is municipal separate storm sewer system. Thank you. They test you that when you take this job. So what you're seeing there are streambank restorations, and again, we're designing. So a streambank restoration is going in along a creek or a waterway and trying to clear a lot of debris out of the way, and trying to do things that take contaminants out of the waterway that would otherwise be going into degrading back into the water and contaminating the overall quality of our water. And these projects require extensive design. Currently, there aren't any designed, but we do have some construction funds applied for, and so we are requesting $150,000. And again, that bottom number is adding to the previous slide to design some of these, and we might prioritize that based upon where those grant funds might come from. And then over on the right, we are looking to significantly increase the volume of inlets that we restore or replace, excuse me. That is about three times what we normally spend on inlets in a single year. Again, we are hearing over and over from the community, we want you to do more stormwater maintenance, and so that is a direct reflection of that.
How do you, for the MS-4 projects, how do you prioritize which creeks that we work through?
Sure, that's a great question. So there's a few different factors. So the first one is the watershed. So in the township, we have a total of four watersheds, and that will, each watershed has different sediment requirements or sediment reduction requirements that we have to apply for or seek within our MS-4 permit cycle, which is typically five years. And beyond that, we look kind of more at the practical side of where do we have access points, where do we actually own the land. So a lot of these you'll see are in Levittown. A lot of the green belts that we talk about in Levittown are actually township- A lot of the green belts that we talk about in Levittown are actually township land on either side of the waterway itself, and so those are ones where we have a lot easier of a time going in and making those improvements because we don't have to worry about getting easements or worrying about property owner access. And importantly, the actual waterway itself is township-owned too, as opposed to some others that might be privately owned.
So when we think about the stormwater fee, which is something we think about a lot, and I know the community thinks about a lot too, you can see here that from the capital improvements from a drainage perspective, which is what nine out of 10 people think about when they think about stormwater, is not nearly as significant as what's happening on the MS4 side. So the municipal separate storm sewer system program is a mandate out of the, from the Environmental Protection Agency, from the Clean Water Act, which I'm sure this community has heard us talk about before. That is dealing with stormwater quality, right? Ultimately, what that federal and then through administered through the state government regulation is saying is that we need to take the quality of our stormwater, which is measured through complicated engineering, and improve that. And so the stormwater fee is funding both of those. I think a lot of people in this community have, who I've had the opportunity to talk to will say, hey, there's so much work that needs to be done on the drainage side, you know, is that really what it's funding? And the answer is, well, it's funding both, and it sort of becomes like a utility, you know, from the way that the state views it. You know, we have this opportunity or obligation, I should say, to improve the quality of our stormwater. Well, how much stormwater are we creating, which is sort of how that bill is created, not different than water or sewer usage. So when we look at the stormwater fee, understand that it's funding both of these and that, you know, one of these things is not optional. I would argue both are not optional. We have to manage stormwater as well, but it becomes super complicated. Any questions on stormwater? I think we're going to be talking about this pretty significantly later on as well.
You have a say, and if this, if we don't beat the topic of stormwater to death enough for you, tomorrow night in, I believe upstairs, the stormwater advisory committee is also going to be meeting. So if you want some company to talk even more about stormwater, those are your crew.
Yeah, we also have good graphs here in this room tonight, talking about, quote of the drainage projects and what the replacement schedule looks like for that. I think if I recall correctly, it's a 1,000-year replacement process for all of our existing stormwater drainage, as well as the demand for additional drainage in areas of the township where it doesn't exist. So a lot of opportunity in stormwater.
Yeah, and just to kind of put that into reference a little bit, thankfully, an underground pipe doesn't have to be replaced as often as a road has to be repaved, but generally speaking, anywhere where you see inlets, you see inlets on both sides of the road. So generally, for every one mile of road, you have two miles of stormwater pipes. That is very common in a lot of parts of the township.
Are we tracking for residents on our website at all, the various projects that are going towards that stormwater, that stormwater fee that we have? I know one of the things that we talked about is trying to get as much actual work done out of that fee as possible, a huge percentage going towards actual projects.
Yeah, what we, I think we have a slide on it later, if I recall, and we had talked about this extensively. In August, we had a town hall meeting with the Langhorne Gables project with that community down in the Gables, and we actually showed them the budget. We said, here's how much drainage work we're doing, here's how much MS4, streambank restoration projects we have to do. If you'll notice, the cost of those two subsets of projects is greater than the amount of revenue we're receiving from this. And so they said, well, what's the plan? Which I thought was a great question. So two things, grant funding, right? Delay where you can, and then try to reduce the cost of those projects by gaining other efficiencies of scale, potentially insourcing some of it, things like that. That budget doesn't even go into dealing with like inlet tops and other sorts of small drainage work that we do here. And there's lots of areas of opportunity for improvement in some of that, too. Other questions about stormwater? We're getting into summary slides, so I think everyone will be thrilled here. Okay, so first, a mentee question.
Yes, so of everything you've heard, this is certainly not an exhaustive list, but again, we're focusing on the improvements or the things that are new and additional. If you wouldn't mind pulling your phones out again, if you need that code, it's at the very top of the screen there. How would you prioritize? This is a ranking order, so you get to put all of these on the list, but you get to tell us which ones are the most important to least important. And as folks complete that, you'll be able to see in real time, it'll average out the sentiment of the room.
So far, the most popular is our traffic signal improvement projects, followed by the South Flowers Mill Road Bridge Advanced Warning System, which we got some grant funding for. Stormwater construction projects, back and forth between the fire command vehicle and the excavator, and then the street sweeper is last. That's surprising. Okay, traffic at the top. All right, so everything that we, oh, we have another question, sorry.
Yeah, last question right now, and then we'll have two more at the very end. Which services are you most interested in expanding? So we talked a little bit specifically about road paving, curb ramps, stormwater replacement, really trying to dial into, you know, we're talking about doing more in addition than we've already talked about. And again, we're talking about this in the context of a deficit. So are these things that you're open to expanding? And then you also have the opportunity there to maintain the existing level of service. So if you're satisfied with what we're currently doing today, you're not looking to adjust that, I would put that as your number one. That's your way of telling us that.
Road paving at the top, followed by stormwater inlet replacement, maintaining existing level of service, ADA curb ramp installation at fourth, and the fifth would be street sweeping, consistent with the last question as well. Okay. All right, so a summary slide. So we remember, to everyone in the audience, the difference between maintenance and improvements, right? Maintenance is maintaining exactly what we have now, so we have a list there, facility repairs, parks, vehicles, IT, police, inlets, and paving, whereas improvements would be adding too. So the total of everything that you saw on a maintenance perspective is $5.8 million tonight. So here's how that breaks down across departments. Road paving and signals, both which were popular in that last question, would be the largest, followed by facility repairs, and then it sort of breaks out across departments from there. So how about improvements? The improvement summary across each department, fire and emergency services, building and grounds, heavy equipment, curb ramps, stormwater management, street signals, information technology, was about 4.4 million. That's how much we went through tonight. So here's how that breaks down. Stormwater projects being the very large portion of the pie, followed by signals and then ADA ramps, breaking out a little bit further from there. So here's a summary slide. For those of us who are deep into the numbers, you can see the capital summary. This is from August. So the 8-18 meeting, which you heard me talk about, this is what that slide looked like. I'm going to show you how it's changed to tonight. So take a quick glance at that. And then here's the change. So here, your capital improvements at 4.4 million, which I just noted, capital maintenance of 5.8 million, that totals to about 10.2 million. And so that change from the preliminary, which we saw in August, is less $300,000 or negative $300,000 on improvements, an $853,000 increase on the maintenance side for a total of about half a million more from where we were in August. August is the very beginning of the budget process, so, you know, very quickly getting up to speed, sort of reviewing a lot of information and preparing it for a public meeting, I think that we got pretty close. So I'm happy with how these numbers sort of, how they shook out between August and now.
And importantly, that is a net change number, so this reflects things that we at the staff level have pulled back that we originally talked about. Those are things like solar panels at one of our facilities, and that also reflects the increases to paving, to curb ramps. Those two things alone, that adds $2 million. So you're seeing, net of all of the changes we're talking about, is a net increase of about $553,000. Just wanted to make sure we clarify that.
Any questions from the board? So visually, give you 10.2. So does everyone have the numbers memorized that we talked about earlier? We can add this one in there. All right, so sources of funding. We said that eventually there would be some good news. So Mr. Valla, why don't we talk about grant funding? So we're looking at grants at the federal, state, and local level. We have in here both awarded grants that we have, which you've heard us talk a little bit about tonight, as well as pending, which means we've applied or awaiting decision. When we talk about township funds, we want to talk about it in a way where it's restricted and, which is dedicated to a specific use and unrestricted, which we're going to go through. Not every dollar that the township has can be spent however the board wishes, right? There are some funds that are specifically allocated for different things, whether they come from the state or the feds or through different revenue sources. It's not just one pot that they can divvy up however they like to. There are a lot of rules and regulations around that. So let's talk about grant funding.
Sure, and I'm going to preface this section of the presentation by saying, our staff warned us that this is probably going to be the most boring part, so I apologize in advance, but importantly, if there's anything that is unclear as we go along, please feel free to jump in and interrupt us. So you'll see on the left side, awarded grants totaling $1.48 million. Again, these are projects that are both in the maintenance and improvements categories. Some of these things are projects that are already underway, specifically the Langhorne Gables Stormwater Project. And over on the right, you'll see grants that we've already submitted for that we have not yet received. A lot of this is RDA grant funding, so about 1.2 million of that, which I believe, if you jump to the next slide, will show you the breakdown of that. So you'll see 1.48 of earned grants, as well as 1.2 of RDA and additional nearly 1.9 of potential other grants. And so it's important to differentiate the earned versus potential. You hear us talk about the 1.4, the earned grants coming right off the top. That's money we don't have to worry about because we know it'll be coming back to us. Potential is, we'll show you kind of the best-case scenario is if we get all of those grants, but we'll also show you the worst-case scenario is if we don't get a single one of those.
Questions on grants?
Yeah, the staff is wrong. This is my favorite slide so far.
This is a positive number, right?
Write that down for the after-action report, please. Okay, so other sources. So you heard me talk about there being restricted and unrestricted flow of funds. So one of them we talk a lot about is the Highway Aid Fund, which comes from the Pennsylvania gas tax. We get a portion of that dependent on how many miles of roads we maintain. The annual revenue there is $1.2 million. We have to be very clear on what we spend this money on. You heard me talk a little bit last week about how we use some of it for public work staff, which sort of makes me a little bit nervous because I think there's an opportunity to use this towards infrastructure improvements like paving that you heard me talk about, and ADA ramps and other sort of equipment purchases. So if we do decide to sort of increase the amount of infrastructure maintenance we're doing, or to say $2 million in road paving, we can supplement all of that average annual revenue from the Highway Aid Fund into paving and then increase that by another $800,000. So it becomes not a $2 million hit on the general fund, so we can sort of reduce that, you know, reduce that total liability to the general fund by using this. So we are proposing in 2026 to primarily use this for road paving unless the board has a different perspective as to where they'd like to see.
And if I might add to, this fund actually has a pretty substantial fund balance of a little bit over a million or about a year's worth, and so there is adequate funding in this fund between current resources, as well as what we know we'll be getting for next year, to cover that $2 million figure of road paving entirely from this Highway Aid Fund.
So one of the things that we need to figure out with the board's guidance as we move towards the November 17th presentation date, so we'll be back in this room on November 17th proposing a 2026 budget, we may be able to say, okay, we want to commit $2 million in paving, but let's pay for a portion of that out of the fund balance of this otherwise restricted fund so that we're not hitting the general fund, and we sort of ramp up to that with general fund contributions in the future years. You've heard me say that in the general fund, we need to maintain a certain fund balance for our creditworthiness. Not necessarily true in these special revenue funds where we're getting funding from the state. There are small communities throughout the Commonwealth that use their entire fund balance every year, totally appropriate as long as they can support their operations with at least three months of operating reserves in their general fund. So that wouldn't concern me as much. It's a lever that the board has at its disposal.
Questions about the Highway Aid Fund? Okay, another restrictive fund, road machinery.
Yes, so the road machinery fund is one that we don't often talk about, but it is a dedicated real estate tax fund. It gets .3 mils, which is equaled to about $155,000. So maybe about every two to three years, we can buy a decent-sized piece of equipment. But importantly, in the last 10 or so years, when we've had pretty reliable support from the redevelopment authority through their grant program, that is usually our first line of defense for grant funding or funding our public works vehicles, and then if there is ever a need beyond what we have grant funding for, this is usually the next place we'll look. If we don't ever need it, we are able to build that balance up a little bit from year to year.
I think I've repeated my errors from last week and got us off the presentation. Any questions on road machinery fund? Again, a fund we don't talk a lot about. So another restrictive fund is the stormwater fund. So for those who pay a stormwater fee, we cannot just use that funding for anything. It has to be used towards either supporting MS4 projects or maintaining our stormwater infrastructure, including cost of equipment, materials, and engineering. So our average annual revenue is $1.6 million. As we look at the total cost of projects over the next five years, we know that the cost of projects is greater than five years of revenue in the stormwater fund. And so as we heard earlier, we're looking at grant programs, we're looking at ways of trying to reduce that. One of the things we're deeply exploring that we talked about during the operations meeting last week is using some of our public works team or potentially adding to our public works team to try to be more proactive on maintenance and on maintaining the both inlets and underground piping that we have, which is miles and miles and miles of piping, I forget exactly what that number is, as well as performing some capital improvements in-house, reducing construction costs. Mr. Valla noted a couple of projects that are upcoming where we may be able to see some reductions there. I think there's more digging that needs to be done on this proposal to figure out exactly how that reduces costs over the next several years on both capital maintenance and on the capital projects of the stormwater fund. But I would just note that we are really feeling the pressure internally to try to figure out how we can bring some of those project expenses down over the next five years because we don't want to be in a situation where we're asking the community for more revenue into that fund. And I think insourcing is at the top of our list of things that we're exploring, along with grant funding. Questions here? I know this is a, this is a big one that gets a lot of conversation. Okay, so the fire apparatus fund. So this is funded by a tax allocation of 1.08 mils. Funds are held until used for a purchase of a new fire engine or other fire apparatus. The average annual revenue is $560,000. So there is an apparatus plan that has been mostly agreed upon by the volunteer fire companies, and I say mostly, like 95%. There's some sort of smaller vehicles within the overall system of the Career 244 Company and the four volunteer companies that need to be figured out. But overwhelmingly, it's a good planning document that tells us what our need to replace apparatus for the fire system looks like in the future. So this is something I want to take a moment to sort of step back and think about. When we think about the fire service, I want us to think about it as one service, while it's supported by one career engine five days a week and four volunteer fire companies, which makes it seem like five different systems, it's really one system. All of these companies work together. If there's a major working fire within the township, you're going to see all of them kind of partnering. So my question, as the manager for the Board of Supervisors, who's proposing to fund the purchase of apparatus in the township, my question is, well, what apparatus does the system as a whole need? And that is what that apparatus plan is primarily designed to do. I will tell you, there's more apparatus in the system than what the system actually requires in terms of serving Middletown Township. And there's various reasons for that. The system has changed, the companies have evolved and changed over the hundreds of years that they've existed, and some of them also provide support outside of the township, which is terrific. We surround four boroughs, there's other townships and boroughs around here where they may be, you know, in a position to be able to provide support, which is excellent. So my question is, in terms of the apparatus plan and a policy discussion that I'll sort of start tonight for the Board of Supervisors, is can we put the apparatus fund, supported by the apparatus plan, to support these five companies in a position to be supporting the service as a whole that the township needs? And so one of the things that I'm sort of thinking about is as we're replacing engines, as we're replacing towers or adding apparatus to the system, if there are purchases outside of the township that are made for a fire apparatus that can support what this apparatus fund requires, does that allow us to change what's happening? So let me give you an example. In 2027, we're expecting delivery of three fire engines that were approved, I think last year, one that goes two years ago, one that goes to 244, two to the volunteer engines, to the volunteer fire companies. In 2028, we're expected to take delivery of a fourth fire engine. Well, if one of the companies were to order an engine that would not be identified within the apparatus plan, are we able to say, okay, in this apparatus plan, we don't necessarily no longer need this engine because it's been supported by a volunteer fire company, which is terrific, and now we can change the plan, reducing the overall liability to the Fire Apparatus Fund? Challenging policy conversations, important working relationships with the volunteer companies as we sort of try to figure these things out. It's, fire engines are very expensive, as you can see, so, you know, we want to be able to be in a position with the apparatus fund to be able to support what the service needs, recognizing that there may be a surplus, which I think gives us an opportunity to potentially reduce our overall liability.
I think the last thing I'll add to that conversation is, you'll see the cost of one fire engine there. The current level of funding we have in there, it takes about two and a half years for us to build up enough funds to buy one fire engine. And there's, I'm going to say maybe about 12 or so that are in that overall plan, just to put that in perspective.
So we know now, at the current revenue level of the apparatus fund, we're not in a position to sustain the apparatus plan that I think is a good plan that should be supported. So we need to figure that out as we move forward. Not asking for any sort of feedback or policy solutions tonight, just sort of looking for creative ways to make sure that we can reduce our overall liability to the taxpayers as we try to support the system. Unrestricted capital fund. Mr. Valli?
Yes, so the capital fund is really kind of the, I hate using the term catch-all, but essentially any other fund that we haven't already talked about, if a project doesn't find a home in one of those places, it'll find its way in the capital fund. Or if there is an overage, for example, if there is not enough money in the road machinery fund for a public works vehicle, usually the capital fund is the one that'll carry the balance. And you'll usually hear us talk about that the most frequently as the board is approving expenditures. Previously, and you've heard us talk about probably every single budget cycle, certainly since I've been here, that there is no dedicated funding source to the capital fund. There is no dedicated tax source, there is no dedicated, other than, you know, having good luck with grants or pretty consistent, good consistency with grants. There is not a single source of funding that we can reliably count upon to fund specifically the maintenance that we talked about, let alone doing anything new or an additional. So that $2.8 million figure over the last several years is an average. And so that is a combination of generally one of two places. One is from the general fund, back probably six or seven years ago before our structural deficit began to emerge, we were able to transfer sometimes a couple million dollars at a time from the operating budget into the capital fund to support the cost of projects. And then secondly, in more recent years, the investment fund, which currently houses the $40 million principal from the water and sewer sale in 2000, there's been some interest income that we've been able to pull off and into the capital fund to support projects in recent years.
So ideally, we would never have a capital meeting like the one we're having tonight again. Ideally, we would have a voted upon and agreed upon five-year capital plan across all these funds that the Board of Supervisors supports and wants to fund. And the capital meetings for that upcoming budget year is a dust-off and kind of revision of that plan. Basically say, does this plan still make sense? Are we in a financial position to fund all of these projects? Is there anything we need to move? Are the cost projections still viable? You know, does anything need to happen here? And the capital budget meeting tends to be, yeah, we talked about that three years ago, still support that project, we're on our way to execute, perfect, let's sort of move forward. You know, we're not there yet. I think we'll get there quickly. I think the department heads have a lot of perspective about what needs to happen, both from a maintenance perspective and then proposing improvements to the Board of Supervisors. If we can sort of culminate that, these conversations become a little bit simpler and allow us to financially plan in a way where we're not looking at surprise 1.1 million dollar roof repair projects, you know, in a given year. So I'm excited for what that future looks like.
Yeah, and again, I think something that I've talked about consistently since I've been on the board is that, that multi-year look and making sure that we're not only looking at the current year budget, but also what does that mean for two, three, four years down the line?
Agreed.
Okay, so projections, more summary slides. So this is sort of summarizing what we talked about here. These are revised estimates as of tonight on what the capital summary looks like from both an improvements and a maintenance perspective, giving you that total of 10.2 million in the bottom right-hand corner.
Same slide as earlier.
Sorry?
Same slide as earlier.
Yeah, same slide, no surprises. Total maintenance cost, so this is sort of breaking it down at 5.8 million dollars. Earned grants of 7,500, so this is where the memorization of numbers comes into play. Other sources of funding at 2.2 million, so it gives you a little over, almost 2.3. So the net 2026 cost of maintenance looks at 3.5. Again, this is maintenance, not improvement. Potential other grants of 2.1, so we're looking at a potential net cost of 2026 maintenance of 1.3, almost 1.4 million dollars. So it will look like a very scary number of 5.8. All of a sudden has come down, you know, significantly, depending on what plays out in terms of grant funding. One of the areas of feedback from the Board of Supervisors is, that we need, is if a project is not funded by grants, what do you want us to do? Do you want to see that in the 2026 budget year? Do you want to push it out to a future year? You know, how does that sort of play out in terms of the development of the 2026 budget?
Just to add a shade of clarity here, that other sources of funding, you see that's money coming from other funds. So it's, we're able to encumber it from other places. The vast majority of that is your road paving, the $2 million figure. And so it's not just kind of coming out of thin air, it's coming from other parts of the budget to really kind of drive home what the net impact to the capital fund would be. And so really, the worst-case scenario, again, is that 3.5 number in the middle. And best-case scenario of all of the potential grants come home for us, your worst case, or your best-case scenario, excuse me, is that bottom number, the 1.38.
So would you say that we need to plan for the 3.5, or do we need to plan for the 1.3?
I would go halfway. I would, I would plan for 50% of grants, you know, coin flip, right, split it down the middle and go from there. What's going to be most important is understanding what the non-negotiables are from the Board of Supervisors on the maintenance perspective. I would love to say, let's fund the entire 3.5 and anything that we get on grants is gravy. From a maintenance perspective, that's, you know, advising you from a policy perspective and an operation of the township perspective, that's what we should be doing. But I can appreciate that it might be a multiple-year lead-up, you know, realizing sort of the challenges we have in the general fund. If you plan for half, you know, we'll probably be in a good place.
And does that other fund contemplate the transfer from the investment fund, or no?
There are currently no proposed transfers from the investment fund. We're showing you kind of the worst-case scenario here without relying upon that. And importantly, this is just the maintenance side. You're seeing right now here on the screen is the improvement side. Same kind of exercise.
Okay, so let's look at the improvement side. So we said it was 4.4 million dollars in all of the improvements you heard tonight. A lot of really great projects that are, that are presented. So we've earned grants of 1.4 million. So that brings us down to 2.9, almost $3 million in the net cost of improvements. Potential other grants at 1.1, almost 1.2 million, which brings you down to a liability of 1.7. Again, we're not sure exactly how that potential other grants is going to play out or what the timing looks like. Feedback from the board of what you'd like to see in next year's budget and what you would not would be super helpful.
When do we typically see the grants come in? Is it December?
It depends. So RDA is usually early December, but that potential other grants consist of grants of every category for every type of project. And each one of those has its own deadline. But I would say the largest kind of single impact that we're looking for is early December. So generally speaking, by the time you're voting on the final budget at your December board meeting, we'll generally have the answer for those RDA grants.
Thank you.
So the challenge is, we have to present a proposed budget on November 17th because we have public inspection requirements that we are super important because we want the public to understand what's being proposed so they can provide feedback too, you know, but there's unknowns to the tune of millions of dollars in play. Other feedback from the board? Cost of capital?
Yes, so again, this is a conglomeration of the last two slides that you saw together, showing you the maintenance and the improvement side by side. So again, we started at that 10.2, really scary number, working it all the way down to kind of the worst-case scenario. If you wanted to do everything you heard, and that is a big if, is the 6.5 number again in both the maintenance plus the improvements category. And the best-case scenario is that bottom line, being able to do everything we talked about. If every grant that we have out there came through for us, that would bring you down to about 3.15.
And just to, we have zero funding to the capital fund, and there is no fund balance, correct?
So to say that there's, I'm not sure I understand the question.
Any direct dollars going, tax revenue going into that?
In terms of what's being proposed here?
Yes, for the capital.
Correct. This is just showing you sort of the expense side. I think it's incumbent on the staff and the development of the proposed budget for November 17th to figure out exactly what the funding mechanisms are going to look like. Ultimately, I think it's going to be a blend of all the levers that we have, some of which we've talked about, some of which we haven't.
There is about a million dollars or so that we're expecting in fund balance to be remaining there. But again, just as a matter of practice for folks who might be new to the budget process this year, typically will infuse directly into the capital fund what we know we're going to be expending for the year. And so some of those funds we do expect, like the stormwater projects, to be encumbered partially.
So let's wrap this all together. So last week, for those of you who were with us on the operating budget, we talked about the contracted increases for the operations. So if we did nothing new, we kept all the existing service levels the same, we didn't add anything. It's just the mandatory increases like insurance and collective bargaining agreements that we can't do anything about. So if we take that number, plus the required maintenance only, Mr. Valli, remind me if we included any grant fundings in this slide?
The maintenance is net of grant funding, yes.
Yeah, so net of grant funding.
Earned grants.
So earning all grants here. So best-case scenario?
No grants we've already earned.
I'm sorry, so not the potential. So grants we've already earned and earning none of the additional grants, you're looking at a $7.3 million liability.
And that, that projected deficit, is that all funds or just the general fund?
That's the general.
General fund.
Okay.
General plus, yeah, we're showing capital as being part of that because the capital currently doesn't have a dedicated.
Yeah, because I think the, what was it, the fire fund, the parks and rec, they were all like negative.
Yeah, we didn't, in wrapping all this up, we didn't address those funds.
Okay.
Because the projects we talked about here are not going to be funded out of those funds unless we otherwise shoot that tonight.
And again, just to be clear, that's assuming we, we approve all of the proposed maintenance projects.
Correct.
You're including.
And that you get no grant funding.
Right.
Correct. So another view, so proposed operating increases. So we talked about some increases last week that the board gave us feedback. So if the board approves all of those, which is not likely, as well as all of the improvements that we reviewed tonight, so capital maintenance and capital improvements, what does that number look like? You take your 2026 budgeted, projected total deficit, you add the operating increases, you add the capital improvements, and it brings you to a number of 11.5 million dollars. And again, that assumes that we do very poorly in the grant field, which is not what I expect. In addition, it assumes that the board says yes to everything, which I also don't expect. So if we take all of that, less potential grants applied for your, and so let's just say that we get all of the grants that we've applied for, we do very, very well, I'm expecting us to do at least somewhat well, that brings that number down to 8.1, almost 8.2 million after the grants. So we are at the end of our presentation. We have a couple mentee questions, but let me just ask the board before we do that. Is there anything you want us to go back over tonight? We can flip all the way back through this presentation and do it again. We did it in about an hour and 20 minutes, so we could probably set a new personal record there. But if there's any projects, improvements thing you want us to go back through, have more questions about, we're happy to flip back to that.
I have a question.
Sure.
Back to the IT. I know one of the things, thinking about our communication and our website and making sure people have information and making it accessible for everybody, is that included in any of that, of how we're going to address that?
So we didn't include anything for a website revamp or any sort of systems that we can use to communicate with the public. We do have a full-time PIO, and we have, in my opinion, resources that are available to us that we're not utilizing as fully as we can. Some of it is a mindset shift. So our team has done a really remarkable job, in my opinion, since August, of really being proactive and out in front, providing information to the public. So I've been very pleased when I sort of hear things or people send me screenshots of the different Facebook, you know, Facebook pages that are in the community, of people showing screenshots of these presentations, or they're clearly having listened to or participated in the meeting, maybe virtually having a presentation. I think all of that credit goes to our acting PIO and to our budget team, who've been super proactive at providing that input and making sure that it's available to the public. I think there's so much more work we can do, so I think we can revamp it up without asking for additional, without asking for additional funding towards it.
Okay, thank you.
One of the things I know that we've talked about last week and this week is that, that saying of existing service levels. Can you give like just a couple, some commentary around, what does that mean to the public? What are existing service levels?
That's a great question. I'm not exactly sure how you want us to answer that. I guess I would say that we get feedback from the community in different ways about things that they'd like to see completed, you know, things that they would like to see, you know, added to our project list that we don't have the time or bandwidth to do. So we have one community member who I met first couple weeks that I started working here, who called me about his neighborhood. I forget what neighborhood he lives in. But they have newly paved roads within the last several years, but no new ADA ramps. And he just said, hey, we should have done the ramps, you know, can you come back and do these? And I'm thinking in my head, well, if there's no additional resources that we allocate towards it, and we have 20 guys who are working really hard in public works, who are plowing the roads, doing the roadside mowing, mowing the grass, taking care of all the street signs, you know, working with Parks and Rec to do, you know, maintain the facilities and then do projects there, you know, when are we going to do those ADA ramps? I'm really not sure, you know, looking at the ADA ramp sort of replacement schedule. I walked around the Langhorne Gables community with one of our residents, just talking about the Gables project and the drainage work that was there. And, you know, this resident has a lot of time on his hands, which I really appreciated, and he spent it with me. And we walked around, and I'm glad I was wearing like jeans and boots that day because we were crawling down into the creeks, and he's pointing to the existing stormwater infrastructure, and he says, Eden, this is half-full of sediment. He's like, no wonder we're flooding here, water's not coming through here. You need to get, you know, cambering in here to understand what's happening with these pipes. You need to get a vac in here to kind of flush all this out in order to take care of it. We don't have that equipment. We don't have that time. We don't have, I won't say we don't have the expertise on our public works team, they have a lot of depth of knowledge and abilities, lack of time to get to all of these things. That's just one community. Like if that's happening there, where else is it happening? So when I think about those concerns, and I think about the existing level of service, it just means that it'll be another year where we don't get to that. However, there are some services we provide here that are really great. If you call our police department and you have a concern about a suspicious vehicle in your neighborhood, they're going to be there, a couple minutes. Our daytime career fire engine is on scene within five minutes of an emergency call. That means from the moment of where they're doing an inspection, or maybe we're in the building, or they're having lunch, five minutes to stop what they're doing, put their gear on, get in the truck, and travel in the township, license sirens to get there. That's an incredible response time. That's a turnout time of like 45 seconds, which is really good. So the things that we do here are things that we do really well. I'm just understanding the need of a township of this size with 46,000 people in it, 160 miles of roads, 800 acres of grass that we mow. There's a lot of demand for additional services. And I think it all sort of comes down to what I said in this interview, which is, this is Middletown. It's a great community, and the expectations are really high. I'm trying to figure out how we can position this team to accomplish those new expectations that come every day. Other questions? I think we have a couple mentee questions.
Yes, we have two final questions to wrap us up for the evening. One is which areas, so you've heard a lot about the different services in the township, specifically on kind of the capital resource side. Which service areas, when we're looking to address the deficit, really need to be prioritized? Which ones are kind of top on that list?
I would note that this is also reflective of the current operating budget. I think the police department of the general fund operating budget is about 60% of that budget today. So it goes from police, fire, road paving, stormwater maintenance, parks and rec, ADA curb ramp.
And the last question, you'll notice the options are pretty much entirely the same. Are there any services of the township you're willing to reduce? So certainly the other half of the conversation, we want to make sure is getting addressed a little bit. And the only additional option you're seeing there, you're seeing the same six options you had before, but you're also seeing a seventh, which is don't reduce any services. And so anything above that line, you're saying, make sure we don't reduce it. Anything below, or excuse me, anything above that line you're willing to reduce?
So the question is, which services of the township are you most willing to reduce? Number one is don't reduce any services, two is stormwater maintenance, then ADA ramp, installation, parks and rec, road paving, fire protection, police is last.
Which might be a perfect inverse of the last slide.
Yeah, I think so. Okay, so the budget calendar, I think this room is probably an expert at it. You've been participating with us since the beginning, which we really, really appreciate and have valued the opportunities to have such intense, at times, public discussion about the 2026 budget. For those that have followed me in my career, I've said this in many municipal buildings, the budget is a statement of the Board of Supervisors' priorities for the coming year, where they want to allocate resources in order to accomplish the priorities that they have. Our job as a staff is to support the development of that and then execute it faithfully, which is exactly what we've done and what we'll continue to do. So this is the process. The last public meeting before the proposed budget is presented to the Board of Supervisors, which will be on November 17th. I hope to see everyone in this room and those that are maybe not here at that meeting. That's going to be sort of the big unveiling. Be a large book, a lot of presentations, a buzzet message from myself, and I'm sure a lot of questions from the boarding community, which we're looking forward to. We are also proposing to the Board of Supervisors to hold, host a town hall meeting. So this actually comes from the Gables Stormwater Project that we're doing. We hosted a town hall meeting with them about their project, and it wound up being amazing. We got a lot of folks in that community who came out. I unexpectedly stood in the front of the room with a microphone and asked, answered a lot of questions that they have about the project and about stormwater in general and the community and different stuff. And it was a great vibe. We had a really great conversation. And then we eventually broke out into sort of like impromptu breakout sessions with our township staff, and we were well-staffed by RVE, our township engineer as well. We want to do the same sort of thing with the budget. We think that the budget has gotten a lot of attention, that it really deserves, over the last, you know, several public meetings that we've had. We think that there'll be a lot of questions coming out of what's in that budget and what does that mean for the township after we unveil it on November 17th. So we'd like to do a public meeting with the board and the community, it's much more informal than what we have here. And you don't really need another meeting of Eden and Nick standing at a podium talking about it, but something to say, hey, this is what it is, ask us your questions, and let's sort of go through it. We're proposing to do that in the evening on Thursday, December 3rd. That's a tentative date. Don't, don't calendar it yet. Don't cancel your plans. We're still figuring it out. Welcome feedback from the board as to what that might look like and how we can continue to engage the community. So I want to congratulate the board for getting through, I think, 59 slides tonight. Any last remaining questions?
I'll just say, the budget process is, it's a tremendous undertaking. It's a lot of work. And I think one, one maybe overly simplistic way to think about the budget process is that we process is that we, as elected officials, our job here is as the guardian of the resources, primarily the tax dollars of our residents, and our job is to figure out how best to allocate that money. And it's, it's always a challenge, it's always a difficult task for us to, to figure out how best to prioritize and allocate that money. It is the job of the township staff, Eden, Nick, all the directors, to provide us with information, to provide us with information about what it costs to maintain the level of service that we currently provide to the residents of our community, but also what it will cost to provide the things that we need going forward into the future. And so, we have now a lot of information. You guys have done a tremendous, tremendous job with delivering this information to us and I think to the community with the right amount of detail, but also in a format that is very easy to digest and understand. You make our jobs easy. As difficult as the job is of allocating tax dollars, you make it easy for us to understand the needs of this community, and so I just want to thank you, I really do genuinely appreciate all the hard work by you two gentlemen, by all the directors, all your staff, you guys do amazing, amazing job every year, and this year was, may have been the best budget process that I've gone through, which is saying something because, as I'm sure residents have seen, this was not all cheerful news as we've gone through this. So, thank you again for, for the tremendous work that you've all done. We now have time as a board to consider and digest all that information and to figure out how to prioritize all of the maintenance projects, capital projects, and requests, so that we can present a budget to the community that, as Eden said, hopefully shows the community our priorities for this township. And so, I would very much encourage residents to be in contact with the four of us, be in contact with township staff. It doesn't just have to be at meetings, we acknowledge and recognize that it can be difficult to come on a Monday night and sit here when everybody has families and careers and other commitments. Reach out to us, we are accessible. Email us, call us, reach out to the township, let us know what you think, how do you feel about all this information, what are your priorities? Because we, we want to hear from you, because we want to make sure that we, when we are setting our priorities, that we are truly setting the priorities of the residents that we were elected to represent. So, one final time, thank you very much to two of you and the entire township staff for all the hard work, and thank you to my colleagues for all the work that you've put in over the last few weeks, getting prepared for this process and the work that we have ahead of us. Anybody else have any last, final comments or thoughts?
I'd just like to say thank you. I think this budget process, the amount of information that we've been able to put out to the public, again, this is, we have a lot of really hard decisions coming up with us. We're looking at, what was the final number, $11 million, $8 million potential deficit between the two funds, you know, it's something that I saw three years ago, we know that we're, we're at the point where, you know, it's either cut a lot of services, which, you know, based on, you know, what we've seen tonight, there's not a lot of desire for that, or, you know, try to figure out how we, we increase revenues in order to pay for the things that need to happen. I think you said earlier in the, the meeting, what was the theme for this budget? I think it's, it's making sure we get back to basics, right? Make sure we are maintaining all of the things that we have in the township, make sure we're keeping them up to the same standard that the residents are wanting and needing. So, again, thank you for the team, I know this is really difficult, I know you're in a difficult place, knowing that there are not funds available. So, again, thank you guys for everything that you've done this budget season, working with the teams and putting this information out to the public.
I just wanted to reiterate and say thank you for the budget team, this is an extraordinary amount of work and very detailed, I think it was explained very, very well, and hopefully the public will be able to see this as well and see how much work was put into this, and we have some difficult decisions to make. I do hope that the public, not just the public that's here, but reaches out and tells us, you know, some of their priorities that they want to go into this budget. Thank you.
I'm going to say thank you as well. I really appreciate also breaking it down and showing us the grants and what the possibilities are, some light at the end of the tunnel. I want to thank all the people that came tonight because it's really important that you're here, that you hear this, you take it back to your families and your friends and your neighbors, and you share, encourage people to participate, because really, that's why we're here. And I just wanted to say both to Nick and Eden, thank you, and to your teams for all the work that you did as well. Thank you.
Mr. Valli, Mr. Raliff, any final thoughts, words?
I'll, I'll just say that I have the easy job, sort of standing up here and doing a lot of the talking with Mr. Valli to the board about what these presentations say, what the, you know, what the information is and sort of walking the board and the community through it. It's everyone who's behind me over my right shoulder who makes it happen, right? It's the budget teams, it's the department directors, it's the people underneath them who have been compiling this data, when we laid out a budget development plan at the end of July, understandably, some of them were looking at us like, are you crazy? That is going to be so much information, that's going to be so much work, and we're going to say what in public, you know, as we sort of unveil it, and they, you know, put their heads down and got the work done and presented a great product to make it easy for us to have this conversation. So, not to add one more thank you to this, but it's thanks to all of them for making it happen. Without them, we wouldn't be here.
Yeah, I think, I actually think that comment bears repeating. So, for everything that was presented here tonight, there is a department director and a team behind them that actually did the heavy lifting of putting all that information together, and so, again, it's, it's worth repeating, thank you to each and every department and their teams for all the work they did to put this together.
It's every detail, it's the, you know, it's the little things that the public's not even seeing, right? If you go back and you watch or look at the presentation, which is all online, by the way, and on a budget-dedicated page of our website, if you look at the presentation in August, it's actually blue, whereas tonight it's red, and that's a detail that someone on our team was sweating about because they wanted you to be able to follow the entire discussion through the budget process and see that there's a change in the information that's being presented and the numbers that are there, you know, down to how you see all of that. I would never think about those details, but we have people who are experts at so many different things on this team, you know, and they care so much that they're sweating